Yeah.
Is that Dick? Dan should be down here.
Yeah.
And so why is that? Is that Mark? Oh, no, Mark's. That's Fred. We should have been Dick. We should have swan him to the address. Who wants to sit over there and see people?
I think they're on the corner.
All right. Fred can be like this. Fred won't be here.
Mark is.
Mark, you went off the three three week.
Mark's in.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular meeting of the River Valley School Board of Education. This meeting has been properly posted in the central office and the home news has been notified. Deb, could you take roll call, please?
John.
Here.
Julie.
Here.
Dick is absent at this point. Fred is absent at this point. Kathy.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
I'm here. Mark is absent. Sarah.
Here.
We have six present or six present, three absent right now.
We do have a quorum. May I have a motion for the proofs of notice to be accepted as proper notice and to proceed with the meeting?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please join me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number one is public comments. Does anybody in the audience have any public comments?
I'm asking a question that may vary what we answered.
It's okay. Just state your name.
Don Brandon.
Thank you.
For the past several years, rumors been floating around that there's a mold problem in the middle school. Do we have a mold problem in the middle school?
Do you have an answer for that?
We've had mold in the middle school. I don't know what you define a problem. We've had to have professionals remove it.
And it's not rumor. We've been talking about it at the board for many meetings.
So it has been taken care of.
I'm sorry. I thought you said mold. Mold. Yes, we've been addressing the mold issue. I'm sorry. That was.
We have holes as well. We need to get rid of the grubs that are going to deal with those.
We've taken it to the committee level. Yes.
Second question. We have in this district available talented technicians who live in the district and pay taxes to the River Valley District, but they're not being used by the school for repair work. Is there a reason why?
We try to do everything locally that we can. I mean, we've made that a priority. I don't necessarily want to engage in.
Not really, but if you do have a specific issue, you can contact me.
No.
I guess in general, we do try to go as local as we can, unless it's anything more specific, I can't really address it at this time.
That's not what I'm hearing from the local technicians, but thank you.
Again, if you have a specific, contact Kathy about it.
You want a specific then for next meeting?
Or between meetings. I mean, if you'd like to contact me so we can get a specific or talk about it, I'd be interested in that. I saw a few more hands up in the audience.
Yeah. Good evening, Dr. Tom.
Hello.
No.
If you could just hear.
Michael Myers, my name. Now, he wrote the mold issue. Never thought of that. The one comment I should make when I walk in, the air is terrible. When you're moving all this air around his pants. And it's very disgusting. I don't have an oversensation of notice, but if you're on the outside, you come in this building, this air is terrible. Something's not right. Now, part of what I want to ask the board, especially Dr. Tom, is the agenda for the new hub school and what we're looking at, number two, third standard.
I'm not sure if this is, this is public comment. We're not really.
Well, there's still questions in relation to the comment of us relative to something that's going to be on the agenda. And it's really big. They closed down all the schools. Arena's going to be in Lone Rock. And the people are looking forward to something. It's something quite unique. And that would be the hub school, especially with the aquatics center. I think that was on.
I think you're confused because we, there is no plan.
There's no plan.
At this time to even consider building a hub school. That was a discussion in 2010 when we looked at this, at closing some of these elementary schools. But we wouldn't have had room at that time for all of our elementary students. At this point in time, because of our declining enrollment, we have plenty of room. We don't need to add or build a hub school. There's never really been a discussion about that, and I don't know where that has come from, or this aquatic center that you talked about last month. There's never been any discussion about that.
Really? Well, that's very interesting because the people in the community need something relative to what they're lost and what. And the schools have always been a central point. And to design something relative of the, what is the word, of the likings of Kelly, us and theater and something quite unique that'd be just a fascination for people wanting from there to come and visit us. I mean, that very well should be looked at. This school, I'm telling you, why came in it? And that the air is very bad. If the air is this bad, when the school starts involved, I don't think the kids should go to pass there. So I don't know if there's mold problem. Let Mr. Brandon run that out. So beware. And you might be looking for alternative places to keep your children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aren't we supposed to get an update tonight, which would probably include a report on any molds on our.
I think that's next one.
Building projects.
Next one.
For the building and else.
Monica. I'd like to read that from you. I'd like to read part of the letter that you were emailing to members of the board. As we prepare for the final year basis, there are several items the governing council and the ACES staff would like to bring to your attention. We are committed to making this transition as smooth as possible and sharing some of the best practices that have been highly successful at ACES. We firmly believe the board has not been privy to the full picture of the amazing education we are providing at ACES. Over the course of the past four years, we have not been asked to deliver an annual report to the board, which is outlined in the ACES charter contract. Without these annual reports, we do not believe that you have all the necessary information to make a fully informed decision. We are requesting a motion to delay the vote for nominating of the ACES charter contract with the school district until October or later. This will allow us the opportunity to provide you a four-year comprehensive report and oral presentation that would highlight our mission and vision, accomplishments, best practices, and expenditures. Having all of this information would then allow you to make data-driven decisions that are in everyone's best interest. The ACES staff has been working diligently over the past five years, one year of planning and four years of implementing, to create an outstanding STEM-based charter school. As with most charter schools, the learning curve is steep and full potential of the charter is not reached until the fifth year beyond. We are excited to embark upon this year, but are concerned that all the time and energy that has been used to create ACES will be for nothing. Administration has mentioned that it would like to see STEM continued at River Valley Elementary. We too would love to see this and are asking that a concrete plan that outlines framework, including training and ongoing coaching, be developed to ensure that this is systematically incorporated across the district. We have been committed to bringing STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math options to the River Valley School District as a sort of research and development school. By offering a more inquiry and experiential approach to learning, our students are now more engaged and enjoy learning more than at any point of our staff's combined years teaching at ACES. Our staff has invested years of training and ongoing development, worked to create new and engaging curricula. Without a solid plan and training for staff members, the work and resources that ACES has created will likely be cast aside due to the significant cost of required training and ongoing coaching. We are proud of the unique teaching and learning environment that we have created. We are concerned that this type of innovative learning environment will not be encouraged and supported at River Valley Elementary, and there will be little or no differentiation in classrooms. What is the district's vision for the science curriculum? Is it the district's intention to maintain the existing science curriculum and somehow incorporate the ACES staff experience and technology into the existing curriculum? This may sound feasible, but we are concerned about how and who will be designing a new model that will incorporate STEM into River Valley Elementary School. Such information would be critical as we do additional research and collaboration to prepare recommendations on how to best incorporate STEM into River Valley Elementary. And I'm imagining I'm on my three minutes. But if you're willing to listen, these decisions are more, are about more than just saving money. The nation is struggling with how to get kids to be more curious, engaged, and involved in their learning. There's a saying floating around education these days that says, "One size of education doesn't fit all." In other words, kids are different, learning differently, have different strengths and different interests. Their brains are wired differently, and yet we teach the same curriculum, the same way to all students. ACES has provided a different type of learning environment and brought the nationally renowned STEM program, Project Lead the Way, to ACES. The kids are thriving with more hands-on experiences with technology, relevant topics, thinking, and problem solving. This approach is not necessarily better for all kids, but it is different and allows more students to engage in learning in different ways. Different can be scary, but it can also be amazing and transformative. Dare I go on? To be fair?
Read the whole letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I read it. I read the letter.
Okay. Little doctor, let me bring it into public comment, just so that people, other people in the district know besides the school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Did we have anybody else in it? Public comments?
Deb Miller, Spring Green. I was going to finish the letter, but you'd rather not. I wasn't going to read it word for word. But I was just going to let people in the audience know. We would have preferred to have been included in, to give input on the staff that was transferred to the third grade position. We wish that that would have happened. I know that it technically may not have been in the contract, but we think it would have been the proper thing to do. At least to include the governing council on that, on that decision. The other thing we would like or concern about the trainings that the new transfers need over the summer. That they really need a lot of training in responsive classroom mindfulness, Project Lead the Way, and the rest of the STEM curriculum. And we'd also like to recommend that we have a school, school board liaison member to be part of the governing council, attend our meetings, and help us through this coming year. And so in closing, we would like to have the comprehensive progress report. We'd like to have the vote put off until October. We'd also like to have a strategic plan identifying how STEM's going to be incorporated into River Valley Elementary, and then to have the school board member be part of the governing council to the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that an agenda for discussion or action or?
Well, the contracts.
Contracts suck.
Is there, is there a meeting, a set meeting time for, for your ACES monthly meetings?
For two in a month, six thirty. So July twenty-fifth is the next one. Can we discuss this when we talk about?
We get, this will be coming up.
Okay.
I have number ten. We can talk about this one. Can we also discuss this after training or does that need to happen? That's not on the agenda.
No, no, I understand, but just talk about meetings. Any other public comments? Item number two, district general councils reply to Lone Rock Board's resolution obtained to Lone Rock Elementary School. Last, we didn't address this last month, but the Village of Lone Rock, their board, sent us a resolution that they had passed. It came too late. It was like a day ahead of our meeting. We couldn't get it on the agenda. It's in your packet. Essentially, what it says is the Village of Lone Rock has declared all properties associated with that building and that school to be the property of the Village of Lone Rock. Essentially, that's what the resolution says, that the school shouldn't remove anything, that we fines if they remove anything, et cetera, and so on. I'm not going to read this word for word. It was published in a paper last month. And our council, our general council replied to this, and this is also in your packet. Essentially, the building fixtures and personal property located within the elementary school and on the elementary school, school grounds belongs solely to the River Valley School District. The resolution that was adopted by the Village of Lone Rock Board is in fact a lethal penalty. It's void. It doesn't carry any weight. It doesn't mean anything. So that's it in a nutshell. Is there any questions? Is there any further discussion? Do you want to talk about anything in the council's letter or in the village's resolution?
I assume we haven't heard a reply from.
I haven't heard.
I have not either.
And was that resolution printed in its entirety in the newspaper just as a matter of the meeting notes? Do you, do you know?
I can't recall.
I don't know why, I don't know why it was put to inform the paper.
So I might suggest to Doris that this reply be printed in the newspaper to, you know, it's, that'll just end the story, so. Yeah, that's not up to us, obviously, unless we take that in hand.
Did you, did you have any more from the Village of Lone Rock about the resolution or the council's reply?
Even though that had the appearance of being editor, written by attorney, it was not, it wasn't signed by an attorney.
Which letter?
The, from Lone Rock.
The resolution?
Resolution, yeah. It was, because I, I asked that too. There's no signature of attorney. So it was not, matter of fact, at the moment, I think the village attorney just retired at Lone Rock, so they are without an attorney at the moment. They're trying to secure the services of another attorney, but, so I, I don't know what weight. I said without, without being written by an attorney and not being signed by an attorney, I really don't know if the thing carried on.
The resolution.
Yeah, I, I think what, I think what you do with that is, okay, just keep in mind that these people just lost their school, okay? And they're nervous about that building. There's a lot of paranoia about what's going to happen with that building. They're afraid of bonehead housing.
I'm just going to interrupt you just for one second, then I'll let you continue. I, I should have added that our attorney, two times in this letter, said, I would like to emphasize that the school district's willingness to work with the village in a cooperative manner. The school, school, and it says it twice in here, so just so there's that sense that we would like to work with them. So there, I hope.
Yeah, it's, like I say, it doesn't, it does not carry any legal precedence with it, so. But it tells you the intensity of their willingness to have some sort of control over that building.
Within the last month, I've been contacted by two village board members to talk about plans for the future for the arena of elementary school. No one in Lone Rock has contacted. They're planning on a series of meetings beginning in September or October, hoping to the public.
Lone Rock. Oh, arena, I read arena, okay. They just recently came, came up, they're planning these informational sessions or community input sessions on what they would like to see done with their building. I mean, not their building, the building.
And in my initial response to Karen, I said, please, let's invite me. Love to come. Start those conversations.
There was one board member who was worried about the stove was being taken out because there's, they have their, what do you call it, their community meal there once a month, apparently. And they thought that that would then make it unable for them to have that. So those things are on their mind.
We have no reason to demolish the building or to harm the building in any, any way.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
We have no reason to harm the building or.
I, I don't know. We're responsible, take care of it. I see it was, I don't know if it was the school district's guys or an outside contractor, but there was Lone, Lone Rock people there. They didn't run any job.
Third-party contractor, that's it.
We just wanted to get this item on the agenda so that we saw the other side of the, the response to the resolution. Let's move on to item number three, replied inquiries from the public regarding recall election costs.
In your packet, you'll notice that Mr. Novak has broken down the costs associated with the recall election. I underestimated by about half what we thought the recall election was going to cost at one board meeting. I said with consolidating five polling places, our, our estimate was that the recall election would cost the school district between eight and $10,000. As of today, and there are still a few municipalities who haven't built this, we're at $20,530.12. So again, this is a very costly venture for the school district and takes money away from, money away from what we could be using to provide instruction to students.
Just to plant some clarifying questions. One, for RVSD, that's mostly administrative time.
Correct.
And you guys kept track of, kept track of hours that you were using that.
And we also included a lot of depth time in there.
My toe.
Your toe, yeah. What is command central?
Would that be the computer people for the election, the machines?
The people that program the machines, and we had to have machines programmed across four counties. So there's costs associated with each county.
Got it. Thanks.
So I assume Town of Clyde is one of those that you're still working, as well as Lone Rock?
It appears that Town of Clyde has not provided those with a building. Correct.
Yeah, and two of the counties have none either. Richmond and Dane. I don't know if Dane will send us anything or not. But we only have the Town of Black Earth in Dane, and we consolidated that into Arena.
Is there a deadline that they need to get it to us?
I'm not familiar with the deadline, no.
So we could get it in six months.
Usually it's pretty quick.
It's usually pretty quick.
You know, they, they want to use that money to pay their poll workers and.
Right.
No, this was to be in the bank.
For me, this is one.
This was May thirtieth, one.
Hopefully it's resolved by the, you know, have a final number at our next meeting.
Item number five, about item number four, update on buildings and grounds practice.
Mr. Novak.
John.
We have a lot going on. As you can imagine, it's summertime. Most of that work is at the, at the high school. We have the entryway put into the main area there, and Mr. Belakely will work on how that's going to operate and make sure that parents are familiar with that when the students come back in the fall. But we have a second set of doors just before the commons, and we will keep the front doors open, but that set of doors will remain locked. So once the students are in, you won't have to go through the office, get buzzed into the office in order to access the commons area. So we're excited about that happening. The HVAC is progressing. They'll be removing furnaces next week. That will be an asbestos abatement type project because unfortunately, the furnaces, the liners just have some asbestos in it. So they have to treat those furnaces as asbestos, and they'll shut down those areas and do all the things that they have to do when you remove asbestos from a building. So they'll be removing three furnaces next week, and then they'll start putting the air handling units in that'll replace that, as well as the boiler that'll go up on the third level or second level by the weight room and get that done. Rick has been busy on getting the building fixed on the outside. He has tri-state basement here where we had that leak, and we found that we have a much more serious problem on a different part of our building. That would be the north end. It would be the north side of the library, which would be part of the original building in sixty-seven. That tunnel, with all the rain that we have had, is getting anywhere from an inch to an inch and a half of water over a stretch from about thirty to forty feet. So we're probably going to have to look at something there that will involve fixing that wall as well as landscaping there to try to get the water to move away from the building rather into it. So I guess that water has probably been coming in for some time. We just found out about it because we're in the tunnels, pump pipes in there for boiler. So that's one of those unexpected things that comes up in these situations. We are also got some blacktop removed over by Spring Green, and we're waiting for that to be replaced. And then we're going to seal coat and do some restructuring, and we're going to change the direction of that. So hopefully we'll get that communicated to families as well on a new traffic pattern. That'll happen at Spring Green to try to make that a little bit safer with the buses coming in on the main loop and the parents going into the parking lot to drop off within the parking lot.
You're talking about River Valley Elementary?
Correct. Yes, I am. Thank you. And I've been working, until I speak of that, been working with the bus schedule with Bonnie and trying to get that finalized. She's very close on that, and we've been able to make, I think, some improvements from some of our original conversations. We will have the two buses that will come into River Valley Elementary School and then move on to Plain, the Early Learning Center in Plain. But we also found out that we can take one of the other buses and have that run through Lone Rock and then directly to Plain as well and drop off students from the Early Learning Center there. So those, some of those students will not have to come to Spring Green. And also be able to pick up all 4K, 5K, I shouldn't say all, most right at their doors. Is our goal is to get the 4K, 5K at their doors. So that's progressing well, and the phone system's moving along. They're putting in additional drop lines where we need to do that. Most of that hardware is all here. It's just a matter of getting it officially installed now.
And one of the reasons this room might smell like, have a chemical smell is because they were actually putting the baseboards along the walls this afternoon. So I'm sure they were using adhesive in here today.
Plus the carpet in here as well.
Is everything on schedule? Does it figure out?
That hasn't been talked to.
So far.
Okay.
This is a time not to talk to Rick.
He's a little nervous, isn't he?
Yes, they get a little jumpy at this time of year as we get closer, but I, our buildings are doing well. Our cleaning schedule is, we're a little bit ahead, but we're still very nervous because we have a high school and middle school to do yet, which are two biggest buildings. The moving has probably been on a much faster schedule than we anticipated. Although there's still some that needs to happen. Teachers, of course, want to get into their classrooms, and we just, you know, you gotta move things, you gotta get it done, and then you gotta move it again, sort of thing. So our goal was to have that done by the fourteenth, fifteenth, and I believe we will have that done after this weekend. So the seventeenth, they would be able to get into their classrooms and start looking forward to the fall. So, so I think we're doing well for the schedule, but it's packed, so.
Thank you, John. Our next item, update on 2017-18 district configuration transition.
Well, John just stole like a huge amount of thunder. Thanks, John.
You feel proud.
I just, I, I, you know, at, at the elementary level, I feel like we're kind of ahead of schedule. Teachers, as they, they really started kind of coming in the last, this past week and past week or so, I'm really amazed that everything is there and done. And so we're just kind of in this process of making sure that they have everything that they packed as they unpack a bit. And just trying to be as accommodating as we can be with the things that they need to feel good about their. as we compete with them, the things that they need to feel good about their classroom and get them squared away. I just really would like to thank Rick and, and all of the staff from Dasher, they were moving and really working hard, and they've done an awesome job, so.
And what we're really trying to do is, is solidify the buses so we can have that information available as soon as possible for, for families. Registration day, Mr. Cry is Monday, July 31st, and we'd like to have, we need to have busing information available at that time.
Thanks. Thank you. Item six, autism engagement workshop, professional development hosted at River Valley in June. Lisa Choos has a summary of this for us tonight.
Uh, River Valley, which is under school district, and CISA III applied for and received a grant to give some professional development to school staff. So River Valley decided to host a two-day workshop in June, and about 60 school staff across, from across 10 school districts came to River Valley, and it was, it was a great turnout, much more than we expected. And there were keynote speakers, and there was roundtable discussion, as well as some breakout sessions, and I'm hoping that we'll continue with providing some sort of training to school staff throughout the next years and working with CISA III in there, so it was real good.
It was really nice. It highlighted our school district very, very well in, in having people from all those other places in our, our building shortly after the school, it was right after the school year.
It was very hot.
It was warm. But we found rooms, air-conditioned rooms, the second day, and in talking to some people that attended the, the event from other places, it was very well received.
Right. Do you have plans, future ideas, plans for next year? Sounds like it was really successful, something we can maybe next year, you know, to continue to emphasize or, as you said, highlight our district, but also be someone that people are looking to for an opportunity to learn more about inclusive art.
I don't know, I haven't thought beyond that, maybe you have.
Yeah, I have. It, it really was based on a grant that we got, so I'll continue to work with CISA III to apply for grants for special education and professional development, because I think it's needed, not just in our district, but across districts, so I'm hoping to continue that.
With the opportunity, do you feel the June, I know the weather was hot, but the annual, like, at the end of the school year, that worked really well as far as...
It sounds like a lot of people.
Yeah, I think, I think it was a really good time for it, too.
Forward to hearing about future ideas.
Thank you, Lisa. Item number seven, district goals review and planning, review of 2016-17 and planning for 2017-18.
As you're aware, we've been working on three goals over the last year, almost two years now, really, and we've got our administrative team divided up and groups of teachers working on those goals, and I know that one person that's been in the lead for each of those goals is going to talk tonight, so, Brian, are you first?
James.
James.
I was just going to talk a little bit about the, the third goal, and I don't know if you wanted to say anything prior to that, or something. So we're going to take some turns going through the, the three different goals that we created for, for the district, but the school community connections committee or group of people we've met during the past year, I guess I personally look at that, at this group as a little bit of a, an extension of the Like a Hawk group that was meeting a few years ago and started the Like a Hawk banners and promotion of things for our district. So, but just some of the things we did last year, a district brochure was created, distributed at the homecoming parade. We continued to increase recognition of community businesses through the WASB Business Honor Roll, sales of additional Like a Hawk banners and tagging businesses on social media with, with partnerships occur. We want to continue on for next year with public service announcements, radio, TV, video, Facebook, et cetera. Continue with the updated district brochure, community service projects in all our communities in the River Valley, increasing recognition of community and businesses, not only through the WASB Honor Roll piece, but also co-curricular events, home news, radio, RV TV. And then we just noticed that some of the Like a Hawk banners, they need updating around our area businesses, as well as we'd like to expand that as well, and continue to sell River Valley apparel and merchandise. And then also, we talked some about inviting families and businesses and community members into our schools more often, as well as, we're going to start talking about some school-to-home visits by teachers and school staff. So that, that kind of summarizes what we've talked about for this next coming school at this point.
What is our definition of community? I, I see on here we have students, we have community. What is, what is our definition of community?
When I, when I think of that, just intuitively, it's the entire River Valley area, so residents within the entire boundary of the school district.
So residents?
Businesses, yeah.
Um, I ask because I, I want to make sure that we have, in here, we have students and we have, businesses are listed, and we use the word community, and I think it's important, even if we don't use the word here, we emphasize perhaps in our definition that we also mean families when we talk about recognizing them in things, is, is not just the residents, but also family as a whole, so, within increasing our connections. Is that correct, our definition would have families?
I just want to make... I feel like you guys have done good work this, this year on this goal, and, and what occurs to me is that it, it feels like it's kind of a dual mission of, like you said, like you say in the rationale, that students, it's about the students, but it's also like a, it's public relations, and a lot of it is about public relations, which is important, you know, both things are important, but, I don't know, just observing that, that you kind of are working on two different levels with this goal, it feels like.
So we're going to move on to goal number two, or?
Sure.
Okay. I was going to say, and Tom, ask them if you wanted to present goal two, you want me to do that, Tom, or?
The reality is that we divided up, and Lisa had the, drew the shortest straw, so she got me to quote-unquote "help" her with goal two. So Lisa has done the vast majority of effort around goal two.
Thanks, Tom.
Hope you're welcome.
Just to be fair, I had Darby on my...
So James had Darby as his goal, Darby's not here tonight, but we always pick on him if we can, so James probably did...
So the community one is James and Darby, not James and Brian?
The community one's James and Darby, correct. I just didn't realize the order was not one, two, three, so I, I...
But Darby did all the work, is that what you're saying?
Brian did all the work?
Yeah, Darby did all the work.
Okay.
We digress.
Sorry.
Miss Choos.
For goal two, we are trying to increase the percent of students who enroll in post-secondary institution and increase the number of economically dissipated students who enroll in post-secondary institution. The data that we use for that isn't yet available on Y dash, the data portal that we're using, so we're hoping to see those results by the end of the summer. So what we really focused on was providing career and college readiness younger than what we currently are doing. So we had high school students visit elementary-grade classrooms to discuss career and college pathways, and really to talk about the advantages of performing well in school and being motivated, and that was a really, that was a really good day for those fourth and fifth grade students and the high school students who did it for us. Seventh and eighth grade students were included and asked to attend the high school career night, so that was the first time we had middle school students attend that night. We applied for and received a transition improvement grant, and that will help improve discussions and increase the number of offerings and employability skills and youth apprenticeship programs for students, not just in special education, but also those who are considered at risk or who have differing needs. So that's, that's a really positive thing that's going to start next year, we're offering a new class for those students. Eighth grade students attended a career AEW plat bill, which they've done in the past, and they all love it, and we're hoping that they'll continue to explore other things to do, so like James and Holly, Lachner, the school counselor at the middle school, just explore other career activities throughout the school year, because it's so well-received by the students. Our 11th graders are to attend a career planning conference with their high school counselor, and the counselor's at 100% attendance rate for that this year, and so that was a really positive thing, so we're hoping that next year we'll be able to have 100% attendance rate for our eighth and ninth grade students as well, so that's the goal two. And then there is ACT practice session exam offered to all students, which is the first time we've done that this year, and I think our ACT scores really showed a jump, and that was, I think, probably part of it.
Yeah, our ACT scores actually are quite high compared to average of our district. We don't have comparables yet, we're hoping to have them by this meeting, but they, we don't have, they're, they're not available, but we're anticipating that we did quite well this year compared to our neighbors, school districts that we use in comparison purposes. And, and just to piggyback on what Lisa said, the, the ACT prep course and the work of our special education teachers and, and the Hanson at-risk teacher did to help acclimate those students for the rigors of the ACT exam, I think has been really positive. I'm just, just talking to the teachers who are proctoring that exam this year for us, much more attuned and focused on the exam this year. So I think we're going to have really positive results if we continue to move in this direction.
So for next year, we're going to review the ACT, ACT information more and see what else we can do to prepare students, because that is, you need a good ACT score to get into college, so that's something that we really have to continue to focus on, but we're also going to discuss streamlining the academic and career planning ACT portfolio, so they start at the sixth grade level where it's supposed to start now, so that's going to be a lot of work and discussion for, for next year, but I think it will be really beneficial for all students.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks.
And I'll do goal one, and just to give you a quick overview, most of our groups try to meet twice a quarter, so there's two administrators and a group of teachers, so we meet at the beginning of the quarter to kind of plan and, plan our doing, and then we meet at the end of the quarter to study and then act on what we did, then continue moving forward. So goal one is our reading goal, and I don't have to read it, but increase the percentage of students needing only the universal curriculum by 6%, which, you know, looking, that'll be one of the things we look at for 17-18, making sure that number's still attainable, but at the beginning of this past school year, we had 11.1 of our students receiving interventions, and now heading into this fall, or at the end of this past school year, we're at 10.7. We feel that, you know, that decrease is due to the understanding of RTI with our staff over the past few years, in addition to other things that, and we wanted to highlight as groups, we did a few other things, but the main things that we did were request for more adult literacy volunteers to read with students. We had middle school students in elementary classrooms, reading to them and talking to them about the importance of reading. We utilized time at the November in-service to have teachers discuss best practices in their areas and grade levels, some professional development, just internal growth there. We have, we're working on right now, we actually started working on it last winter, but we're going to have every staff member by this fall have a "I am currently reading," kind of like laminated piece of paper, so they'll be able to write what they're currently reading. So any kid that walks by their desk or by their classroom will be able to see what that teacher or staff member's reading, and hopefully it'll strike a discussion, or, or who knows. So just sharing the, the value of reading. And also, we implemented a summer reading incentive program for all students, so a few of the things that were, we did this past year. And then going forward to the next year, we talked about discussing our STAR universals, the universal screener we use for STAR reading and math, looking at the cut scores for our intensive level intervention, discussing common language for reading techniques, especially among our elementary teachers, and Mr. Hecklen's been a part of that. We had some teachers go to a conference that talked about this particular subject, also the utilization of technology devices to support our teachers in the area of reading, and continuing to ask for adult volunteers at the elementary level. So that's our overview of goal one.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions?
I'd like just to add one thing. One thing that we've really noticed, and this isn't necessarily a positive reflection on the River Valley school district, although I think we're doing very, very well, but what we found over time, we started looking at students that have moved into our district compared to students that have been in our district long-term and standardized tests, and we found that the students that have been with us for a long period of time tend to do better than the transient students. And, and again, I, we don't know if that's because we're doing such a great job, or if the impact of being in a transient household might be...
Self-selecting.
Yeah, so it's, it's just an interesting observation that we've made, and Phil Mansky has a lot of data, when he comes and talks about the ACT score, he's going to talk about the students that have been in our district since, I think, beginning of kindergarten versus the students that come at the end of elementary, middle school, and high school, and the kids that have been with us, the students that have been with us, K-12, do significant, quite a bit better than students that move in at some point in time.
These are great. Have we, I see that you implemented summer reading incentive program, have we received any feedback on how it's going?
Not yet. So we had two turn-in dates. We did one at the end of summer school to kind of get kids going right away, and the next one will be, it's really registration day, but in my head, me collecting all these papers for the summer reading program's going to be way too much work. So I've actually put together a Google form, I'm going to throw out, and hopefully it be a Skyword or the Skylert, and on social media say, hey, parents, all I need you to do is validate, fill this quick Google form, let me know the minutes your kid did, it'll be much easier for me to sort and determine who the leading readers were for those prizes we collected, so.
That's great. I, I really like the idea of the "I'm reading now," that continuous engagement of learning and reading. Having our role models, clearly it makes a difference with our teachers' reading, even if it's not related to the subject they're teaching. It's really great. Thank you. Thank you. Move on to item number eight, update on achievement gap reduction, AGR. Jamie Hecklin will provide an update on our transition from the Outgoing Sage program to the AGR program.
Yep, so I provided you with a document. I apologize, I didn't get that, that to you a little bit earlier, I actually totally forgot that I had a spare document from last year, so I'm sorry. I provided you something very similar. Last year's review was essentially based upon the fact that we were a pilot school and this program came out, we signed up to do that, and it's become mandatory for everybody, so the Sage program was eliminated. And what the achievement gap reduction program really, I guess, gives us an opportunity to do is have some flexibility if you're not at an 18, 21 student teacher ratio in any particular classroom in K3, okay, that's K3, or 5K3, excuse me, okay? So it gives us some flexibility with that. From, you know, a coaching perspective and collaboration with reading, certified reading teachers, which we have, responsible for each of our buildings, and, you know, they can also provide that small group in one-to-one tutoring scenarios as well, so really this works in conjunction, the flexibility comes through our TAP process and the people we have, really good people we have in providing those supports to our students. We also, over the, the last year, had an opportunity to adjust any of the goals, which we started out in that pilot year. We were super flexible with, with the goals, and they were, we really made them classroom-specific depending upon the kids, and then they informed that this is going to be a five-year goal cycle, so it kind of changed it a bit. So it kind of changed it a bit. And so we were able to really link our AGR goals with the goal that, goal number one in the district goals that we were able to just talk about. So it was kind of a nice match. So we're doing well. We actually started, you know, some of the data that reflected in goal one, the reduction of the percentage of students really needing intensive intervention. That's just part of the process and reviewing that. The big piece from, from AGR is just making sure that we're reporting out at the beginning and end of year, classroom numbers and then the strategies that we're going to select in regards to classrooms that have, that are outside of the 18, 12 student ratio. This year we started with five and ended with three. I'm sorry. Yes, started with five and ended with three. It looks like next year, as of today, we'll start with seven classrooms that will be outside of the 18, 12 ratio.
Thank you, Jamie.
I have a question. Within here, it talks about the contract requires participating schools have professional development related to small group instruction, data-driven instructional coaching, different types of training, which is great. Do we have a plan or are they providing us with suggestions on training?
No suggestions whatsoever I've asked about that.
It's all I. Okay.
So just a continual process. I'm just going to go through those areas, flip-flop. And five staff members attend the instructional coaching multi as well. I guess in the course this past year, specific to the instructional coaching. I actually attended that as well. Interesting model.
Part of the conce, season B, part of season three consortium allows us to engage in some instructional professional development around the achievement gap reduction. And I know you've utilized Meredith Bebo from season three, Jamie.
Yeah.
To do some of, to help with some of the training facilitation in that regard.
Item nine, more reminders and announcements. I know it's six months away, but it's summer two, so we have to start thinking about the, was the convention in Milwaukee?
Oh, when do we need to nail that down?
Certainly later is better for the delegation, it must be in that hotel.
So October, September?
August.
Yeah. The, the two hotels that are obviously on either side of the convention, some fill up very quickly.
Okay. So maybe we'll have something more concrete like next one. So think.
Or just let Polino.
Or let Polino.
Yeah. Are we looking at other hotels, cheaper hotels?
Yeah, but then you get transportation costs potentially getting back and forth if it's 20 below. John, are we looking at different hotels at the convention, ones that like?
I'll probably tell you about things.
I was just thinking of maybe some of the places we've stayed in the past.
We, we went to Ramada, which is kind of on the outskirts and promptly got robbed, so.
Wasn't there a heat issue in one place as well?
That would have been on Holiday Inn, which is at the DoubleTree now, I think.
Okay. Like no heat?
And robbed.
That was up.
Okay.
The Plaza Hilton or Hyatt are definitely, they definitely Hyatt are there.
Because I know where to answer your questions.
Yeah. Text the delegate.
It's a great convention. I, I can't say that enough. I mean, we've been kind of rotating our groups of our administrators, team there along with board members. It's, it's, I think, the best educational convention in the state of Wisconsin by far. So.
It's a really good opportunity. I, I probably think I'll sit out this year. Is there a minimum, maximum number of board members, administrative staff? Is that a opportunity?
There are some boards that come down with.
The whole board.
And they're retired boards.
And there's been years where I was the only one that was one administrator because I was a delegate.
And some come for a day, some stay for a whole convention.
We, we have the same flexibility.
The hardest part is the hotel wants us to now.
So what we do is we flip-flop. So what we've done in the past, and we've been lucky, if we know, like Dick has come down to be the delegate, that's day one, but then he's left. So then we'll have other people transition into his room. You have to book three night minimum in those hotels because they want, they'll fill up. So we've kind of flip-flopped in that regard. If you knew you were only going to be there for a shorter period of time, we use that room for another person within our group.
I'd recommend it for, for new board members. I, I found it incredibly valuable after, after my first year, you know, it's, it's learn a lot, a lot.
I'd go, but I got a, I got a wrestling tournament that weekend. I signed a contract to.
During the week, during the week.
During the week.
So I mean, but the, the weekend though, you know.
Because it's usually a Tuesday through Friday. Tuesdays, the pre-convention stuff, and then Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
And I, and I get a, and I get a do-meet on Tuesday, so.
Oh, well, come down on Wednesday, Dan. On Wednesday.
Well, think about it, by next month, we should probably have solidified numbers of rooms just so we could. Yeah.
Okay. Item 10, legislative update, and Alvin, board training opportunities are decades. And he is not here tonight because I believe he's got a grand meeting.
Yes, he has a grand meeting, so.
So I, does, do you have anything for?
All I just want to say is that, you know, the, the state's still debating the two-year budget. And although we feel more confident that there's going to be some level of per pupil categorical aid added for school districts, until we actually see those numbers, it's, I don't count those dollars. So we're, we're in a holding pattern right now.
All right, thanks, Tom. Action items, consent agenda, checks, invoices, receipts, June 2017. Open session, meeting minutes, June 8, 2017. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, consideration and action on strategic planning process and timeline.
We, we administratively, through talking with our colleagues in lots of other school districts, narrowed our search down to two people. One comes from the urban and regional planning world and one comes from the communications world. We were able to talk administratively to one of those individuals last Tuesday. The other individual had been, has been out of the country for the last 21 days. So he was not prepared to talk with us on Tuesday, but will the following Tuesday. At that point in time, after we've talked to these individuals administratively, I want to give Kathy their names so she could maybe have a preliminary conversation with them. And then, I don't know what you're looking for. Do you want them to come to the board meeting? Do you want, at some point in time, do you want a recommendation from administration? I, I don't know what you're exactly looking for. And what we've talked with them about is taking a lot of the work that's already been done. So taking the facilities plan that we had done, taking the demographic study that we had done, taking the work that we had done with Gary Harrop and using that as a springboard to help the board define a three and five-year strategic plan. And that's what these gentlemen do professionally.
What are they charged professionally?
We haven't got to that question yet. It'll be, there'll be a cost associated with that.
We got a lot of smart people in this room. You really need an outside consulting firm.
I absolutely believe we do. In my experience with strategic planning, it's essential.
You need someone who can guide the process so that it doesn't go this way and that way. And I've been in a couple of those rooms, we've tried to do it without anybody. Do you have a ballpark figure of what?
I don't, but I can call them, I can call them tomorrow and, and talk about. You know, really, we were just doing kind of a fact-finding telephone conference with both of these folks. And we were able to talk to one. One is a Madison area, Madison resident, who has worked with Wana Key, Middleton Cross Plains, Corona and Sauk Prairie. The other is more Waukesha-based, but I've been in, he's facilitated meetings on boards that I'm on and does an excellent job and has a statewide reputation. So either, either of these two individuals would be very good.
And would it be like common protocol for, to ask each of them to put together like a, a short written report, just a page proposal or something that we could look at? But I don't think, I think bringing them both in is.
Or would you just trust the administration's recommendation? Let them do the footwork for us? John, what do you think?
Sure.
I, I would like to know, strategic plan is a huge, you know, quadrant. And there's so many things in there. Is, that was part of why I asked about is family in our definition of community. Because when we do a strategic plan, we actually have to write down what every word, you know, definitions. So that was why I was asking. And is this, we're looking at expansive, everything we're going to do in the next three to five years, whether it's on the playground, whether it's about, you know, health and development?
What, what, what we've talked about and what they're kind of looking at is work on facilities and demographics. So what will we look like? What do we want to look like from a facilities perspective, serving the number of students that we anticipate serving? And then on top of that, there's a curriculum instruction element and a technology element.
Were you able to read Gary Harrop's follow-up report? We, that might be a good document I could send over to you. Because we had an initial planning session where we initially went through things and then he facilitated it and he came up with a report. So I will send that.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I'll just, for myself, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in, I don't need to like get to know these two people, but I'm interested in how they're, what processes they're thinking of following and what their, what each of their fees are.
Right.
And, and I'm, and I'm, and I keep hearing you're going to take these three things and then we're going to put together a plan with the board. And I, I, there's going to be more, I mean, I'm assuming there's going to be a more expansive process. I'm just interested in what that, what each of them would propose.
Correct. And they've talked about having community meetings, having meetings with the, with the board members, board members specifically, those kinds of staff.
All staff.
Yeah.
Are you, are you as an administrative team going to meet with them person to person or just do phone interviews or? What was your plan? Because if a couple of board members wanted to be a part of your discussion and recommendation, that would be fine versus bringing them to a special audits meeting, doing two more presentations and delaying this until a September decision or, you know, it's just going to delay getting the ball rolling? I don't know that'd be, I don't, I think it'd be a part of the selection process. A couple of board members want to be involved?
Sure, I'd be happy to volunteer since I.
I, I feel like I don't need to be, like to be.
I'm sure it can be, but.
So then by the next meeting, we can have a recommendation so that we can start.
Adopt something, yeah.
Is that a good timeline?
Think about that.
You know, I guess I'd like, do you do, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I, I guess I would just, I would say that's fine. I guess in my thinking, this process in my mind started with you as a school board in the first place, talking about retreat and talking about some common planning goals and kind of morphed into that strategic planning language, so sure.
I'm sorry I ever used that word retreat. I apologize for those. Just take that off the board.
I'm.
And, and what are we looking for for a date? Are we thinking September?
Again, I think that each of these planners might have a different time. You know, I'd be interested in what their timelines are. If one's like, this is going to take you two years and one's like, we can do this in six months.
Can I just start from September? I don't want to wait, maybe.
Sure.
I, I don't want to wait six months.
No, no.
I'd like to start from September.
And they've been on our website and they've, they've, I've sent them information and a lot of the, the conversation was really just fact finding. The telephone conversation we had with one individual last Tuesday, and what we're having next Tuesday is really just, they're, them learning a little bit, although both of them are very familiar with their district, but learning all of the form about what we already have done, issues, obstacles, questions, concerns.
So maybe when you have your next telephone interview set up, maybe send an email to the board members who may want to show up.
It's one-third next Tuesday.
I was just thinking Fred or Mark. But what's the process after, I mean, after that?
I think, I think, I think administratively, you know, then I'd ask them to talk about what they're, what they see the work scope of this looking like, how many times are they going to meet in our community and then compensation.
So it's like a little, you know, they're going to.
Right.
We're going to sketch it.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think they, that, you know, we've had the first conversation and I don't necessarily know if it's, then it might not necessarily be an ample staff comparison, but I hope board members have a conversation with the second individual who comes from the communications world, by the way. You're going to like him, Mike, I can tell you right now.
Well, we might have to call the other one back maybe.
Well, or, or it's the next step of the process. You do the fact finding and then the next step is like, here's what this person's thinking and here's what this person's thinking.
Send us a proposal.
Send us a little proposal and then, I mean, I'm happy to, yeah, that's what I, that's what I guess I'm asking.
And that's what we were looking at.
I don't need to get, you know, have an intimate friendship with them. I just want to look at their proposals and see what their methodologies are.
Okay.
But it would be nice in August to make a decision and then, then that gives them the month of August to start planning meetings because we're all going to need time for our schedules.
Okay. Great. So I don't think we need to take any action on this one. Item three. Just real quick, I was going to tell Julie, if you go back into last month's board minutes or board packet, there, it's action item number five is the summary report from the 18 board meeting. You can find it right there for Gary Harrop. Congratulations.
Wonderful picture graduation.
Any pictures?
Lots.
Item three, consideration and action on resolutions, resolutions accepting gifts.
We have one gift tonight, $100 for operation of our district drone from Jerry and Deb Helsa.
All right. Mike was great enough to come out to the Iowa County Dairy Breakfast again this year and shoot some footage for the host family. And that was part of my, I said, we'll put some money toward them being able to do it.
I'll also add that, that Mike brought the drone to APT's grand opening of the new theater.
So I would entertain, entertain a motion to accept the script. And it's a roll call, so we'll, it's a resolution, so we'll take a roll call. Julie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Idol abstained. Sarah?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Or did I miss? Dana?
Yes.
I'm trying to learn these names across here. Six yes and one abstention and two absent. Motion carries. Item four, consideration and action on resolution, accepting resignation, resignations, if any.
And we do, we've got a resignation from Lynn Umhofer. Lynn has been a speech and language therapist in the River Valley School District for the last eight years. She's a River Valley resident. She's served our district very, very well. She is, is not retired. She actually resigned and is leaving our district to go back to Ithaca. And the reason she is going back to Ithaca is she has 20 years of experience in the Ithaca School District and realizes that she would be eligible if they offered her some kind of retirement package and she'd have to work probably another decade for us, you know, to receive some kind of retirement benefit if we offered one at all. So we wish Lynn the best in, in her return to the Ithaca School District.
So.
The first, the first answer would be to, to accept her resignation.
So.
So, second.
Who was the resignation? Julie. We'll take a roll call.
Dick?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Seven yes, two absent.
And then the second part of that is when Lynn came in to talk with me, I informed her that liquidated damages at that time would be $750. There's a letter in your board packet from Lynn on requesting that you waive the liquidated damages charge.
The official date of her resignation is June 26.
Yes.
So can we, do you want a motion to waive the charge or can we make a motion to enforce the charge or how do you?
It can't be said, it can't be in the negatives. So you'd have to say waive or enforce.
I mean, a motion that we charge her, her, helping her leave the interview?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
No, you want discussion? I don't, but I, you say you want some discussion?
Any further discussion?
I, yeah, I, I, I just, I regret that we have to, but it feels like a slippery slope. I mean, I sympathize with her position and I appreciate that she's a taxpayer in the district and don't disregard any of that.
No.
But I just feel like it's a slippery slope. Unless there are special circumstances, which we're going to talk about some later on, in another case, you'd be able to enforce it.
I would second that. I, I thought she did a very thoughtful job of discussing how she felt that she, over the years, has made a contribution, not just with her time, but financially, as a taxpayer, as a citizen. But these, this, this payment is part of the contracts and everybody knows that they are and I think it is a very difficult place to go with one individual because we're going to have certain circumstances like this.
And I'd also say, this, this charges aren't meant to be punitive. It's meant to cover costs that, of filling a position quickly, which takes more time and effort and, right?
Yeah, and it's getting more and more challenging, particularly in special, special education allied health-related fields, people services area, you know. Lisa, do you want to talk to the difficulty of hiring?
I don't think so.
They just don't exist and they can make much more money working in the healthcare world than they can in the school world. So we're having a very difficult time attracting speech and language therapists, occupational therapists and physical therapists who want to be school-based professionals.
But Lisa, we'll still be covered, right, for our school year?
There are other options.
Other options?
Like, time is saying we could always contract as a hospital. It will cost us more money, but there are other options. There's more and more out there with online speech therapy and we do use that a little bit here that I've been looking into if we can't find a person that fits.
So there's a motion and a second to enforce a penalty? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And it's really penalty because it's a liquidated damages fee. It's not necessarily a penalty, so it's semantics, but I think it's important.
There's one other resignation.
There, there is. Go ahead, okay. Jen Erickson, who's been our part-time school social worker for a number of years, has elected to resign and it sounds like she's going to be able to be a stay-at-home mom for a little while. So we regret that Jen is leaving our district. I think she's served us very well over the last, I think, four years or four years. And that also will be, it's going to require us to rethink positions and I think Lisa's going to talk about that in a... We don't generally bring those to the board. I recognize, yeah, Megan Gerolds, who's been the secretary at Lone Rock Elementary School, has done a fantastic job in that role. Our elementary secretaries wear many more hats than a traditional school secretary does just because of the disparate nature of our district, the lack of immediate nursing, administrative support. Help me, Sarah. They, they wear a lot of hats.
Yeah.
And Megan's done a great job. Jamie, do you want to say anything about Megan?
Yeah, she, I'm happy for her because she's going to pursue some, you know, it's kind of a new direction for her and their family farm and things like that. But at the same time, I'm sad to see her leave because I thought she was, she was very late, so she's...
And she was...
The first person that I hired when I became principal of the building, so it was...
Good job. What's the new configuration that is?
Megan was going to transition into the high school guidance people services role. So that is currently posted. We're hoping to find a qualified candidate. And then we have a retirement. Sheila Burris, who I know at least one of my two children had as a elementary school teacher, has elected to retire after, I believe, 31 years of service to the River Valley School District. Multi-generations of students in our district were fortunate enough to have this Beris as a, as a teacher. So we wish her nothing but the best in the future. Jamie? Any words about Sheila as well?
No, I didn't hear Sheila. Thirty-one years old. I was ten. Yeah, I know it was interesting. She actually, Brett Maxwell was teaching at the Spring Green Building. He was, she was his second grade teacher, so it was always interesting. She was reminded of a key thing about that. But yeah, we're really going to miss Sheila and always enjoyed having conversations with her and she always really cared deeply for the kids that she served in her class and just wish her well and her new journey.
Item five, consideration and action on hiring, if any. And I think we do have...
We do. Lisa?
A school psychologist following to our lack. So Claire Knoll is currently a school psychologist at Dodgeville School District. She's been a school psych for seven years. I met with her and she was very impressive and we're hoping to absorb this social work position into her role as well as mine. So we'll be sharing social work and school psych duties and I think that will, that'll be, she'll be her position. So that will be for her.
And Claire's interesting. Claire is a Sauk Prairie native, is married to Pete Knoll, who's a River Valley High School graduate and had a number of siblings that went through River Valley High School as well. They're excited, they want to be back in the River Valley area. And probably about two weeks after, was it a week or two weeks after we elected to pull the posting from WeCan, Claire came knocking on our door. So again, a position we didn't think we were going to be able to fill literally surprised us.
So this, you said, so this will, you won't post for a part-time social worker? This will serve that niche? And is there another, so is there, I'm just trying to get all that?
No, so what we...
I'm sorry.
We were looking for a school psychologist. Didn't think we were going to find one. At the same time, Jen Erickson, the school social worker, elected to resign. So we were really struggling regarding how we were going to fill either of those positions. We'd actually pulled the school psych position off. We had one applicant, he wasn't interested in coming for an interview. We twisted the arm, but another person who has a sibling that teaches in our school district, she came for an interview, but she wasn't interested in coming here either. And so we really didn't know what to do. And then literally Claire showed up on our doorstep.
Okay. So a part of that, part of the salary will be absorbed by the not replacing the half-time?
We are not matching her salary from the district she's coming from, just so you're aware.
Yeah, that's...
But yes, it would, it will be kind of a two-for-one deal.
Great, thanks. So, but it says school psychologist. I just want to make sure, you know, that we're not trying to squeeze as much as we can out of each administrator and staff member that we have and then we lose them because they are totally overtaxed and underpaid for what it is. I mean, the position she accepted, at least the paperwork I have says school psychologist. Do we need to change the job title, the offer, things like that to do that? To, I mean, I don't...
No, social workers, although they're great to have in school districts, it's not a mandatory position. And the things that Jen was doing, it's something that both Claire and I could do. So I was doing the school psych position by myself and I think that she's going to really, we're going to be able to share a lot of the job duties and be able to absorb Jen's job pretty easily.
Great.
Madam President, Dick was asking too, did we have to vote on Sheila Burris?
No.
We did.
This is a retirement.
Yeah, there's no really...
She didn't sign a contract.
No, she didn't, she wasn't under contract. She elected not to sign her contract.
Got it. So we need a...
Do we need a motion to hire Claire Knoll as a school psychologist?
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, consideration and action on academic standards notice.
Every year, we're required to put this particular notice, it's in your board packet on our district website. So we're putting that academic standards notice on our website.
So we're approving, like putting the notice out there or are we approving the notice?
You're approving the notice.
Correct.
Was that motion down?
No. Required by law?
Yes, we have to put on our website that we are following the common core state standards as our basis.
Okay, so whether we, does it like or dislike the common core standard?
The state requires us to do this, so...
Might as well just get it done.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, consideration and action on 2016-17 restraint and seclusion reports. Again, Lisa?
This is a report that I have to present annually and it's, it goes by Wisconsin Act 125, which prohibits use of seclusion or physically restrained except when certain conditions apply. And the reason we're supposed to present this is to see if we can find patterns and try to decrease the number of seclusion or physical restraints that happen in the district. During this 2016-17 school year, there were five students who were physically restrained or secluded and I just listed where that was at and in the different schools and just different demographics, which is in that report. I think the most important thing that you should note is that everyone who had to seclude or restrain were trained and certified in Crisis Prevention Institute's Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Program. And we offer that training once or twice a year and every year we get about 10 to 20 staff members additionally trained. So we'll continue to do that and we hope that that will help prevent students being restrained. Is the training optional or are we taking 10 through each time? So each year we have more staff, I mean, it sounds like something everyone should be trained in. That's my goal. It is optional. It is optional. Is there, when we... Is to make some of these trainings required? When we do the trainings, we always discuss crisis teams in each building. And it's a little difficult with the smaller, like in Lone Rock, knowing it was a little bit more difficult to have enough staff members trained, but we did. And so there were crisis teams in those buildings. So when there was a crisis, they announced that announcement and then the crisis team members came and were able to control the situation. So it's not essential that all, everyone in every building is trained. It would be really nice because there's a lot of preventative tactics that we talk about in the training. But I think we do have enough in each building trained to have a crisis team. We'll continue to offer the training and hopefully, I, we do get 10 to 20 members, I mean, staff members every year taking the training, so hopefully that will...
And this is an area where Stacy Houdner, elementary guidance person, and Lisa are both trainers. So we have people on staff that can provide that training, which is nice.
So we need to, like, uncoordinated report?
I think you have to actually make a motion to approve the report and we have to forward it on. We have to make sure that it's in the record as approved.
So and I make a motion to approve that report?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration and action on annual meeting dates. So we need to decide if the annual meeting date will be October 19th or the 26th. Does the 26th work better?
Aren't we typically around the 26th?
Generally, we get the final budget numbers from the state by October 15th, but we're hoping that...
You're referring to 26th.
Yeah.
We're typically this, towards, closer to the 25th, aren't we?
I think typically we have, you know, I don't know if anyone has conflicts or not. We're just kind of throwing those two days out there.
I think one of the things that happened when we went a little earlier, we ended up having that again because they made a change in that last week of October, so we had two of them, so probably the later is better.
I'll move the 26th.
Was that a motion then? Yes.
I know that you have seven.
Third day of questions.
Dick had a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Item nine, opposed? Motion carries on the 26th. Item nine, consideration and action on 2017-18 CISA number five contract.
Lock in your packet, you should see the information about the CISA five contract. And that is the area, I saw a couple of you cringe when we were talking about telepresence, speech and language therapy. It actually works quite well for some of our students. And Lisa, that's what that contract is, correct? So CISA five is a provider of online speech and language therapy and we use that, those services for a few of our students.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just want you to be aware that if we are unable to find the speech and language therapist through traditional posting, we might be revising this contract.
Gotcha. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, consideration and action on non-renewal of charter contract for Arena Community Elementary School after 2017-18 school year. So the administration is recommending that the board take action on non-renewing the ACES charter contract at the end of the 2017-18 school year. I had some questions asked to me that, no, we're not ending the contract early. We are just taking action on this item right now. The contract will hold through the whole school year.
We want to discuss some of the issues around this contract now or after we make a motion or...
In theory, you have a motion on the floor.
Is that a motion?
No.
Motion to non-renew the charter contract for Arena Community Elementary School after 17-18 school year.
And I know that all of the board members were sent to.
We have done a. Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a second.
So we can have discussion.
All seconds, we talk about it.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
All right. Do you want to talk about?
I just want you to be aware, and I know that part of that letter was read, but all of the board members, I believe, and some of our administrative staff both were sent a, a letter, uh, last night regarding, uh, delaying action on this. I think administratively, uh, we'd like to move forward. Uh, I've had some kind of conversation with the, the governing council, um, members about how to potentially keep the, the school intact, uh, either as a school within a school at Spring Re纳 Elementary School was one of the proposals, or, uh, as a school within this, this, a school within a school at the middle school. Um, administratively, I, I can tell you that we're, we're not in favor of that. We've had schools within schools, uh, before this district and it was rather divisive. You've already made the decision to move towards consolidation and vacate Arena Elementary School, ACES, at the end of the school year and, and we'd like to just continue moving in that direction.
So let me ask this, if we put it off until October, I mean, is there any reason why, is there any reason why we need to do it tonight? Is there some action that, that we have, we need to settle this tonight so we can do X, Y, and Z?
What, what would be different in October, Sarah?
Well, they, the governing council, who's put a lot of time in on this, have asked us to put it off till October so they can give us reporting on it. I don't think there's, so I'm, so I'm mixed. I don't, I don't see that that is going to change, I don't think we're not going to non-renew. I think that we are, we are going to non-renew. I don't think that's going to change that. But if these guys who have asked us, who have put a lot of time in on this and a lot of energy, ask us for, for the courtesy of a few months to put a report together so they can be heard before it's non-renewed, I don't see why we wouldn't honor that request. I don't see.
Could we get a report anyway, even if we decide to non-renew? Because I think that's a great idea.
Can we ask members of the governing council that are here? Monica or Dev or?
We can put together a report regardless.
So I guess the same question to you, is there some reason why putting off the non-renewal vote would prevent these other steps from happening?
For me personally, um, I agree with you that the non-renewal is probably going to happen regardless, but I think it would be important for us to be heard. I think some other governing council members might have hopes that something could continue, but that's where we might have, is some disagreement or differing hopes between me and some of the others.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I feel like it's, I want every, you know, if, if there are some steps that we can take to make people feel better about the transition, I don't want to spend time in hopes, you know, hopes that are unrealistic. I don't think, I don't think that that's any, in anybody's best interest. So, I, yeah, go ahead.
I would like, I, I think the importance of the plan is, is as it contributes to a strategic plan and incorporates STEM into River Valley Elementary. That to me is what is most important here because it's been mentioned that we want to bring STEM into River Valley Elementary, but we want to know how because with the studio school, there are things that were, it was going to be a project-based learning school, you know, and that was going to be incorporated and that didn't work out. So that's one reason we're asking for a strategic plan. If there is hope to make this River Valley Elementary a STEM school, how will that happen?
But I don't, I don't know that, so I think there's like, it's the role that the ACES governing council and staff do or do not play in what the role of STEM at River Valley Elementary is going to be. I think is a delicate issue that we probably need to get upfront with each other and negotiate because I'm having, I have a feeling that from just what I'm making up from where I'm sitting is that the administration would maybe, that, that, that they might be a little afraid of having too much input on that and, and how, and how are they going to handle that? At the same time, you're afraid, the governing council is afraid that they're not going to have any, that they're not going to have any say in it. And here they are with all this training. And what, as a board member, what I'm interested in is finding a way for constituents to be heard and the governing council to be heard, but honoring that our administration still needs to have, they still need to be able to come up with a plan that works, works for them. Does that, am I, I don't know if I'm making any sense.
And, and you know, I hope to work with the governing council and the teaching staff over the next year along with, uh, the staff at River Valley Elementary School to come up with a viable way that all students can have access to STEM material, uh, and those experiences.
Hypothetically speaking, if, if Arena was not closing, if, from an administration standpoint, charter school contact, is this something you would enter into again? Has this been beneficial for River Valley or beneficial for Arena?
I, I think it has, you know, my, my goal, you know, charter schools are supposed to act as model demonstration projects and then, uh, transfer across settings. So I think it's very important that all of our students, uh, at the elementary, at the pre-K through fifth grade level, uh, are able to have the experiences that the students at Arena Elementary, at ACES, have been able to have over the last four years. Uh, just access to technology, access to the Project Lead the Way materials, I think would be valuable for every kid in our district, every student.
But it may not look the way the governing council's vision of, you know, it's gonna have to be shared.
It's gonna have to be shared, I, you know, I, I know that, um, Brian went to a school, and I, I always blank on whether it was Edgerton or Evansville, Brian, where they have a STEM lab in the school and they staff that lab sort of like, uh, we would staff music and art at the elementary school. And teachers have the opportunity, classes have the opportunity to go into the STEM experience on a regular basis and then also go in when the, the, with their classroom teacher, when the STEM teacher isn't necessarily there.
And I don't mean to be figuring out the answer here around this table. I'm trying to think bigger picture of what, like, what's the process here? And does this thing on the, does this action on the table have, play a role in that one really?
You know, I think if we vote to non-renew, it doesn't mean that we're voting to not support them. I think our support is there even if we go forward with our.
But I would argue that it's symbolically that, that, that feels like non-support.
I'm just saying, no, the, the word support, just disagreeing with someone doesn't necessarily mean you're not supporting.
Understand.
Not supporting the idea potentially or their idea, but I, I get tired of the non-support.
I, I just.
There was two questions, though. The first one Sarah asked was, is there things that would be impacted schedule-wise that it has to be decided tonight? And the other one was if the, um, school, the physical building was not being closed, would the administration be considering renewing this?
And I can't answer that, I don't, I don't know. We didn't, that wasn't necessarily a conversation that we had over the last year and a half.
And then the timeline of voting tonight versus, is there anything that this impacts that we're trying to, the buildings or?
You know, one of the things that I, I had conversation with, uh, Jamie and Brian about this week is making sure that we have, and, and Brian's kind of transitioned out now, but, uh, making sure that the, the Arena staff is engaged in planning that's taking, taking, taking place at River Valley Elementary School and making sure that staff from River Valley Elementary School are engaged in planning with the teaching staff at ACES regarding the, the transition of the tech, not only the, the staff persons, but the technology as well.
Yeah.
Tara, you need your hand up, I'd like to hear from you.
I guess having to share what we've done, I don't think we should, and I, I'm not going to change history and I, and I understand that the combining is going to happen. But I think giving, giving ACES the opportunity to share what we've learned and what we've done and what we've accomplished is kind of what we want to do. Whether it has an impact or not, I think having that ability to share what we've accomplished because I don't feel the board members know everything that we feel that we've accomplished. We spent five years learning, working together, planning, and I think, and just kind of culminating, sharing with you what we've accomplished.
And I just, and I'd just like to clarify, I don't recall ever being asked and saying, no, that you couldn't come and share. Your letter kind of implies that administration didn't allow you to come and share?
It didn't imply that.
I, to me it did actually, just to make that observation. The other observation is that it, it makes it sound like there's no differentiation occurring across our district except at Arena Elementary School, which is just insane.
And, and I, I'm not the one that wrote the letter, but I.
But what does it say?
I think differentiated occurs in every school. I, but this was, the whole purpose behind the char, charter was to offer another option, which is fairly good.
There will no, be little or no differentiation in classrooms at River Valley Elementary School.
So, so let me just, that, there's obviously like a lot of energy on both sides, right? And, and I don't mean to get all woo-woo about it, but, but, I, I mean, I think that like dealing with some of this, dealing with some of this energy in whatever form, I don't know what the form is, but that's going to be a step in, in, in the transition, right? So however we figure out how we do this, I'm not convinced that it's going to matter whether the charter has been renewed or non-renewed. I don't think it is going to be renewed, I don't, I think that hypothetical is not realistic. But, but there's definitely like a transition thing and I think what you said, Tom, is, you know, having the, the staffs both ways, I think that's fantastic, I'm so happy to hear that. So I don't know how we go, you know, how we go forward and what this has to do with, I still don't.
And when you say that it's inevitable that the charter won't be renewed, I look at it as by putting it off from tonight, we may be giving some people false hope that it could potentially. And we just need to say, okay, we're going to move forward and start the transition through this year so that we're ready to go a year from now.
Well, what, what is the transition? I mean, it's still, we, it, it's a STEM school. The staff should have and have, um, you know, a focused plan that they've been working on. And so they're going to, in their classrooms, continue to do the plan that their charter school, um, you know, their vision. So what, what transition is necessary while they're teaching? Like what are, what are we saying that we have to, we have to make this decision, this non-renewal decision now that is going to change for what these children receive during their school year?
It, it's at the end of the school year.
No, I understand that, but making the decision now.
I just look at it as by not making the decision tonight, we're giving people false hope that it's not going to happen.
Okay.
That, that we're gonna, we're, we're gonna readdress all this and, and it's not going to change and I don't see that happening.
I would say, okay, I'm an old-school person that believes in value showing tell. If you non-renew us tonight, there's no incentive for us to complete a report to show wonderful things besides what Linda shows in the paper about teaching methods, not just STEM, but also responsive classroom.
But don't you want to see what's happening in Arena brought to the rest of the elementary school to make the whole thing better? Instead of saying that we're doing this in Arena and it makes Arena great and whatever anybody else is doing is not important.
We, we, we totally agree that this is something that we've, that's, we've worked hard on this focus so we don't want, when we transition, this to be lost, is what I'm saying. Because we've set exactly what our mission and vision is with our STEM and everything. And we're, so, we're feeling that it's going to be lost because there's not a direct focus yet on where we're going with our science curriculum. So we spent five years building, planning, Project Lead the Way is great, but if we're in the idea that we're going to come and it's going to be spread over all the school, it's not going to be as effective. You can't take these little materials and share it over everybody without the training and without extra materials and support. So as a teacher who spent five years working really hard and learning on my Project Lead the Way and the STEM and the teamwork we had, I'm concerned that when we go into this big group, which I, I know is going to happen, I'm not fighting that, but it's going to be lost, everything we've put in.
Yeah.
Because there isn't a direction. And I want to be a part of that building, but I.
All those things that you're talking about have nothing to do with renewing the charter. That's a completely separate issue, whether the charter is renewed or not renewed. So let's just move on and get another thing off our list so we can go forward in life.
I think you're looking, I think you're looking for a lifeline, like a commitment from board of STEM is important and it will continue, it will be on the agenda, it will be part of the strategic planning process. Is that because, you know, he's right, we're going through this.
I, I get that, and I guess that's part of what we wanted to share with you, is what we've done and what we've accomplished. So there is a new focus and a new vision, and a new vision that maybe that can be incorporated. And that's why we wanted some, to be able to share.
But you can share that with or without a charter renewal.
I agree.
I'll add something. What, what we're coming about is, is ensuring respect for the, the work that you've done. And I can let you know from a personal standpoint, from my perspective, I have the utmost respect. And I want, I want to hear a report, I want that to be completed, completed. And I do agree that it is, if we can agree that we've, we greatly value what you've done and we want it, we want that input, I think we could move on and, and bring some closure to the, uh, charter contract without, um, compromising that. That request, my personal request and, and piece of respect.
When, when do you think you could have a report? On October?
Can you repeat? Nice, Linda, just to say.
Oh, yeah. Well, I just wanted to say, I think it would be valuable for all of the staff to hear this report. The STEM lab that we visited is in Edgerton.
Thank you.
And it's a friend of mine that runs it.
Perfect.
So that's what got that going. And we're just coming off an amazing STEM camp that we held this summer. So I think there's our teachers that value this. And I think if the whole River Valley staff heard this report and felt comfortable with things that we're doing, they gotta be very valuable and beneficial. I mean, I have some visions that I'd like to see happen at the River Valley Elementary School. And I think the small group that I went with during summer school and the small group of us that went to visit the STEM lab in Edgerton has some ideas too. So I think it can be a good strong team. But I think it's important that the whole elementary staff hear this report so that we can value what's been done in the name of, so.
Right. Yeah, that, that's a good point, renew. So the issues are, are, there are two issues here, hearing the report, valuing Arena and all their hard work, um, and the non-renewal. I, I do think they're separate issues. I, I don't know if non-renewing now or two months will make a difference, but I do think we need to hear the information and the report. There is a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion?
No, you, I was going to ask a question, but, um, the motion, can you repeat the motion right now?
Motion.
To non-renew.
To non-renew.
The charter contract.
Charter contract.
After the 2017-18 school year. All in favor?
I-
Opposed?
I don't feel I have enough information at this point, so I'm gonna go. I don't, I don't wanna abstain, I just want more information, and I want to know that we're gonna see the report before, we just, I want it to be as collaborative as possible, and I want the data that they have compiled quantitatively and qualitatively to be in our strategic planning process. And so by having it be an actual report that we receive, I think that's more apt to be in that strategic plan, and I am concerned that, you know, respecting that process. I think the discussion is over. So it was just a, is it nade, or are you abstaining? I am abstaining from voting to not renew. Motion carries.
Madam President. Madam President?
We can move on to item 10.
Madam President. Okay, she, just before, I was gonna vote when she started talking, I was gonna vote no.
Oh, let's get that on record. Motion still carries. Item 11, consideration and action on technology committee recommendations. Fred is the head of Technology Committee, has anyone-
Yes, he asked me to, to review, and so I will do my best to do so. We didn't, we don't have any recommendations for action from the committee. We had a good meeting, I think as we've been reporting all year, the assessment of the first year of one-to-one is, is good news, and James, if you wanna chime in, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but it's, you know, the damages were low, the, everything was, was pretty much coming along. We talked about training for staff, there are several training opportunities that have happened and are coming along. We talked about at what point we sort of tip and require teachers to be more trained or, or go from coaxing them to be trained to require them to be trained. And then the other biggest, big thing that we had was, that we talked about was including technology in the strategic planning process, and how that would be a piece of the strategic planning process. Did I, am I missing? Am I missing anything?
No, I wasn't there.
Were you? You were there.
Oh, we're gonna do that survey, Sarah. Yeah, we're gonna do a survey, you know, we'll follow up with the same survey we did last fall to see where maybe areas of improvement are, or where we improved, and then we'll go from there, so.
Cool. But we didn't have anything for-
Item 12, consideration and action on employee relations and policy recommendations.
So we've got business manager reporting agreement waiver of liquidating damages. He's gonna take a brief intermission.
John, go down. It's just down below.
May 3rd?
June 19th.
No, I'll give the next one.
June 19th, 2017. Can you turn your machine off, John?
No. That's the packet for the, you mean just that next one?
Yeah, but he wouldn't have it, unless he's turned his minutes in.
The minutes from the last meeting. Yeah. So you don't put it on until we do the next meeting? Oh, okay.
I can try to get them here, let me work, see if I can pull them up here.
Oh, that's okay, we can, John, you're gonna have to help me, because I didn't bring any stuff.
The basic question is this, you're, what administration is recommending is that you waive the liquid damages, liquidated damages, although you just charged Ms. Loff for liquidated damages, you waived the liquidated damages for Mr. Novak in lieu of completing four or five-
It was five and you made it six.
Okay, six, thank you. Financial reports that need to be filed during the fall semester after his retirement, working with Ms. Lyman to make sure that those are completed.
Almost six?
And we were assured that the time that was put in, the cost per hour was substantially more than the fee waiver, so.
Right, yeah, in seriousness, because we did just, we, that's why I said before, unless there are special circumstances, and these are special circumstances where these reports, if John wasn't doing them, I mean, Bridgette and Brian would probably like try to work their way through, you know, it would take, it's-
I think it would be valuable for, Brian, are you interested in doing those reports?
No, I've done those reports, and we'll be, we'll be giving our money's worth if you waive this, so add more, absolutely.
And I think it's important that John work with Bridgette through that process.
So the ERC committee recommended, or that we approved, the waiver of liquidated damages?
And so, risking sounding, like I contradict myself, I do believe and also agree with John that these are very special circumstances, and that we need to look at the situation here.
Basically working in lieu of any of these damages.
Right.
So you need a motion?
I'll second.
I think he just made the motion.
I saw his head around.
I'll second the exception.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Any further discussion?
All in favor? I.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second issue, pupil services director slash school psychologist contract for 210 days.
Raze and I had talked about moving her contract to a 260-day contract, she would prefer to keep it at 210 days, and administrative report, we support that request. I believe the ERC approved that as well.
ERC approved it, and I think also Bridgette added that the wage changed, so we're still at our 2.4 or 8%.
Correct.
So it doesn't, it's out of our pay.
Correct.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we change, we make that, the school psychologist contract 210.
It's people services-
People services director, right, yes, sorry.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And 2017-18 substitute rates, probably also there on that sheet.
Yeah, we recommend changing- Sure, Bridgette, go ahead.
We haven't changed our substitute pay rates for two years, so we were, reached out to surrounding districts and looked at some surveys to see where we were in comparison, and we are doing pretty, pretty well, but we also don't wanna wait too long and then be way behind. So we decided that it would be best to increase some of those for the coming school year. So currently, we pay our teacher subs 105 per day, we're going to increase that to 115 per day. We'll continue to pay our hourly subs $11 per hour, and then we are increasing our long-term sub rates. So if a sub is covering a long-term subbing position and they don't have the license in that specific area, they are allowed to sub in that position for up to 45 days. But without the license, we will pay them $135 per day, and that's an increase from 125. And then if they are licensed in this specific subject area and they can sub beyond that 45 days, they'll receive $200 per day.
That's an increase from?
125. Which that was, we were really lacking on that one. So that's more based on like what our base teacher salary is in comparison to like a base salary daily rate, and that seemed to be what most surrounding districts were using, whereas we were very low in comparison.
All of the categories were a little lower than, I mean, we're bringing, none of these are outside of the realm of what other districts are doing, and it is competitive in some cases.
Can we discuss the long-term sub with the right teaching credentials, as you're doing lesson plans, and you're doing a much more in-depth job than you are just as being a regular substitute teacher? And we raised the regular sub $10 an hour, or $10 a day, rather, we talked about five, but we thought, "Let's do 10," and then we won't have to address this maybe for three or four years, rather than go $5 every couple of years to stay with other people.
What about the hourly rate? How do we choose to stay?
That was on the upper end already, so we just thought we could do that longer.
Well, and if you start raising that too much, then you're getting really close to our entry-level full-time employees, which-
Okay.
So those are all recommendations from the ERC, do you want?
So you need a motion to accept the 2017-18 substitute rates?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, consideration and action on policy committee recommendations. We have a couple policies for a second reading, recruitment and appointment of district administrator, we just thought we needed a separate new policy on how to hire a district administrator rather than just a general administration. There were no changes from our last reading. The next one is 224 Board Administrator Relations, we had taken out a sentence that repeated itself, other than that, we just reflected to current practices and standards, it was last revised in 1996. A new policy, grants to the district from private sources, we added a couple words in the first sentence, any financial support from private, and then we added "or public source," and then we also added, "that is not an entitlement." And then we also made the limit, if the grant is requested for $10,000 or greater, we just made that cutoff distinction. Other than that, there were no changes from the first reading. 165, Board Member Code of Ethics, again, we just updated our Board Member Code of Ethics. Two of them that we added that we thought were important were, when vested interests or conflict of interest arise on any issue that involved board members, shall refrain from all related deliberations and decisions and from influencing the decision of other board members on such issues. And also we added, we did this last time, but I just wanted to reiterate, a board member does not use the board position as a means of self-aggrandizement or for promoting other political aspirations. Again, this was in the first reading, and nothing has changed from the first reading. So those are the four policies that we are bringing to the board for a second reading.
Make a motion to approve 221, 224, B42.
And 165.
Just the three of them.
Okay, I'll second that, if that goes through, we do that, get those three out of the way, and then-
Any further discussion? John?
Nope.
No discussion?
We'll discuss the next one.
Oh, and a motion to the other one. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I made a motion to accept 165.
Second. Any further discussion?
No, I just don't agree with everything that's in that one, so.
Did you have any suggestions for changes?
Not tonight.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple policies that we're bringing to the board for a first reading, the first one is Board Committee, 185 Board Committees and Appointments, we just updated this to include the buildings and grounds and the technology. We updated the public notice, how we have the public notice at the bottom of all our meetings, we updated that to reflect in this policy, also it'd be the same. And we also put a sentence in there that recommendations that have a fiscal impact shall be directed to the Budget Committee for review and recommendations of the full board, because we had discussions too, that the monetary decisions should go through the Budget Committee, the committee.
Can you go, can you clarify that last paragraph that you changed, what the change is, at the very end of that?
What is, what's the sentence, what is the sentence?
It's, "Public notice shall include a statement that any member of-" What was the, what was the substance of the change between what you struck and what you put in?
Committee as a whole.
We had a big discussion about committee as a whole and what that means, so we went through that-
Just didn't say that.
Several times, and then we came up with what we wanted to-
What we wanna have it be.
So we just thought that needed to be the same in this policy as we have in all our meeting purposes.
I got you, sorry.
No, it's good. 185, the rule, what we did, we had, we discussed what a convention delegate was, and then we also pulled out the CSAT III representative, do you wanna explain why we did that?
Well, there are different responsibilities at different times of the year, and I thought it was important to identify ahead of time who our representative was, because it was assumed that whoever was gonna do the convention was also gonna do CSAT III, and we never really identified that they're two different tasks at two different times of the year.
And then the last one we have for first reading is Athletic Code, Extracurricular Attitudal Code and Coach's Handbook, and Brian Cry has information on that.
Can you go through those?
You read them.
You got them? Or do you want me to go through those again?
Would you like to go through them?
No, no. I hope it's clear on that memo.
It is. Do we do that one separate, or do we do the first reading and the other ones?
So does that need to go through a second reading?
No.
Probably not.
Okay, so end notes are never-
Handbook language is not, a lot of this is due.
Let's do 185 and 185 of both for a first reading, make a bunch of me asking, is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, need a motion for the Athletic Code and Extracurricular Attitudal Code and Coach's Handbook to accept it, as what changes? I'll make a motion to accept those changes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Nice compliments on the format of this memo, because it was super easy to get it.
Didn't he do that last one?
Somebody did.
Go, James.
Good job, James, you started a trend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, consideration and action on budget committee recommendations. We had earlier this evening, and we had an update on the 2016-17 fiscal year that John gave, it's kind of, he's working through, it's a good way to find discrepancies and things that need to be fixed, it's, I don't know if there's anything you wanna say about it, John?
I think just-
It's a work in progress.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, you know, we'll have a deficit for 1617, because we took out some loan dollars-
We met earlier this evening and, um, we had an update on the two thousand sixteen-seventeen fiscal year that John gave. It's kind of, he's working through, it's a good way to find discrepancies and things that need to be fixed. It's, I don't know if there's anything you wanna say about it, John?
I think just-
It's a work in progress.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, um, you know, we'll have a deficit for sixteen-seventeen, 'cause we took out some loan dollars last year that were added to fund balance, so they're being paid back this year. But based on the budget we have, we're gonna be pretty close to even, uh, when you take that out of the factor in, in the general fund. The food service, uh, as it stands right now is about a negative thirty-seven thousand compared to a little over fifty thousand last year. So we made some headway on it, maybe not as much as we had hoped to.
And some of that will come with efficiencies.
Right, we hope that we'll continue to move in the right direction on that. And I do have the updated one, which may not-
You have, so you went and updated it?
I, it was updated, I just printed the wrong one.
Oh, also the food service, does it still have the food bar?
Yes.
And then we also had a, a, a two thousand seventeen-eighteen preliminary budget update, and the biggest part of the discussion was waiting for the state to decide what they're going to do. They're just not getting a budget done.
Yeah, probably the other thing I mentioned on that is our, right now our projected equalization, it's going to go up a little bit, uh, next year, which, uh, will help, uh, our taxes go down, so I think right now-
And all, all this information is on the-
On the, on the portal.
Well, look at the budget committee's portal, it's all on there.
All those numbers are estimates at this time, but it does look like the tax likely will go up.
And then the final item on our agenda was, um, the facility assessment and capital planning, uh, study that we, we were looking at, and we didn't take any action on it. What was proposed, I came across to some of the, the committee members, that it just really wasn't what we were looking for.
Well, the buildings and ground, John was saying that, you guys both were looking at the grounds, right? That it, it seemed a little premature with the strategic planning coming up and-
And so we, uh, did the, the correct and proper thing, is we moved through budget.
And we didn't take any action on it either, so we have no record of agents.
We appreciate, we're, we're glad, we all agree, and we didn't have to talk about it twice.
So that's it for budget. Okay, thank you. Item fifteen, consideration and action to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C for discussion of district administrator end-of-year evaluation and discussion of administrator end-of-year evaluations. Can entertain a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Is that next?
Second.
Take a roll call? Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Although, yes. Sarah?
Uh, yes.
John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
That was seven, yes, two absent. Motion carries.
It takes a five-minute recess and then we're gonna go.
I'm interested in that, so she was- That's a, other staff that resides, not for firework, at least people. So to me, it looked like we skipped one.
We did, we're saying what else? The tough one. Yeah, it's great, but it's like, I just missed all the people. Tyler strikes out. Well, Bradley strikes out, Matt and Kyle get the standings tied.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I've done some of that, I should've called you, I saw that, so. I should've, I- 'Cause I-
Just, right when you asked me.
'Cause I was looking, I was looking at it on Sunday, so, yeah. I was just now, you were just now.